All right, thank you all for coming tonight. Martha, would you do a roll call please?
Mayor Nicholson.
Here.
Councilmember Sanger.
Here.
Erin Durst.
Here.
Louis Espinoza.
Here.
Devari Martinez.
Here.
Linda Smith.
Here.
Jaclyn Wells.
Here.
Okay, we have a forum. We'll move on down to public hearing, item A, a special use permit, twenty dash oh one dash oh one educational preschool at three nineteen Fourth and three sixteen West Pine Street. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on that? Okay, and we'll move on down to item B, a resolution, amending City of Rawlins fee schedule appendix C building permits. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on that? Okay, now we'll move on down to item three, citizens' participations. This is the time that anybody from the audience has five minutes to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda. Okay, and we'll move on down to B, a proclamation, twenty twenty National Public Works Week. National Public Works, National Public Works Week proclamation. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainability and resilience resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the City of Rawlins. And whereas, the infrastructure, facilities, and services cannot be provided with without the dedication efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of the government and the private sector. Who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public's interest for the citizens, civil leaders, and children in the City of Rawlins to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of the public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year twenty twenty marks the sixtieth annual National Public Works Week sponsored by American Public Works Association slash Canadian Public Works Association. Be it now, therefore, I'm Mayor Stephen S. Nicholson, due hereby designate the week, May seventeenth through twenty-third, twenty-twenty, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with respect representatives of the American Public Works Association slash Canadian Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees and to recognize the susten- sustainable competition that makes to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life.
Mayor, may I just add something really fast?
Yes.
Um, I, we're not gonna do our typical things that we did last year with the group of us together. Um, but we are going to still do build public works trucks, so we'll be taking, uh, non-perishable food donations, and that will be given to St. Vincent de Paul, so we'll have our, um, truck set up outside of our building, and people can just drop that off, so we would encourage citizens and yourselves to participate in that. Um, and then we'll do a little cake for the employees, but it'll just be a kind of come and go with less than ten people thing, so. Hopefully, I did want to let you guys know about that, and thanks for the support.
Thank you. Now, move on down to item C, another proclamation, police week proclamation, twenty twenty. National Police Week. Whereas, the Congress and President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the weekend which May fifteenth falls as National Police Week. And whereas law enforcement officers are the guardians of life and property, defenders of the individual right to be free, lawyers in the war against crime, and dedicated to the preservation of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agencies, and that members of our law enforcement agencies recognize their duty to serve the people by sa- safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression.
Oppression.
Oppression. And whereas, the men and women of the Rawlins Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now, therefore, I, Stephen S. Nicholson, Mayor of the City of Rawlins, call upon all citizens of Rawlins and upon all patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May tenth to May sixteenth, twenty twenty, as National Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and operations in which all of our people may join in ceremony, law enforcement off- off. Remember training, law enforcement officers, past and present, due by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in so doing have established for themselves an inevitable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of the Rawlins, of Rawlins to observe that fifteenth of May, twenty twenty, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of the fallen people. Thank you, Troy. Let all your officers know we appreciate everything they do.
Yeah, Honorable Counselor, I just wanted to just bring up that normally, we always have an open house, and we have flag ceremony, um, usually around the fifteenth of May. Unfortunately, because of the coronavirus, we're not going to, um, do that this year, so, uh, please take lots of prayers for all the officers that have sacrificed their lives during that time, and I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, move on down to minutes, uh, April twenty-first, twenty twenty, at the regular meeting, if I can get a motion. Congressman Espinoza.
I make a motion to approve the City Council regular meeting minutes of April twenty-first, twenty twenty, as presented.
Okay, can you give a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Sanger, second set. There's any questions or objections to the motion that was made?
Yeah.
Martha, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with seven yays.
Thank you, Martha. Now, move on down to one, community yes, two thousand nineteen, community contributions.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, this is just in citizen, uh, correspondence reports and information, letting you know that, um, the City of Rawlins has received the ten thousand plus check, and, um, I don't have, I can't look at the documents attached to board docs, doing what I do on board docs, but, um, the, the decision on how you, um, decided to spend the money is available, and I think it was, can you see it?
No, I can't open it here either.
Well, I just showed the receipt of the check. I didn't see anything else.
Yeah, there's a, a sheet of paper there that's.
The six projects. Phase two art project for Sixth Street walking tunnel, place the handrails on the playground equipment at Tully Park, install a sidewalk on east side of Fifteenth Street in Washington Park, decorative light poles at Washington and Tully Park, and possible land swap to transform Nurses Quarter, Fifteenth and Maple Street into handicap parking, or music in the park, and, uh, the rest is committed towards ancillary and nonprofit organizations. The one you're talking about?
No, no. You had to.
I'm just reading.
Sorry.
So, at the very bottom, I think I found it under two thousand nineteen. It's a phase two art project.
And Tully.
For Sixth Street walking tunnel for three thousand dollars, and Tully Park upgrades, handrail and playground equipment for seven thousand four hundred.
Did you like my deer in the headlights look?
That was, I was just reading off the list. I didn't get all the bottom. My finger didn't go.
Martha, is that the, uh, contribution for, is there a document about last year, wasn't it?
Twenty nineteen, yes.
Yes. Yeah, this was a new one.
Well, this was just the money guy.
This was, we just got the money to take care of the project we voted on for last year. Oh, okay, I got it. Okay, now move on down to tonight's agenda, if I can give them a, a motion. Councilman, that's all else?
I motion to approve the May fifth, twenty twenty City Council agenda as presented.
Okay, will you second?
Okay.
Councilman, your second set. Okay, do we have any, uh, questions or objections to the motion that was made?
None back.
Martha, will you open online voting for that?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with seven yays.
Okay. Now, move on down to the approval of the Rawlins Planning Commission. And we have one advocate, Darcy Walter. She is out there.
She right there.
She'd like to come up and tell us, uh, why do you like to be reappointed to the board?
Well, the reason I'd like to be reappointed is there are things that we've started that I wanna see through, and I just enjoy being there and helping the city progress.
Okay, any questions for Darcy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, can we get a motion?
Mayor.
Councilman Sanger.
I move to reappoint Darcy Walter to the Rawlins Planning Commission for the term ending January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, you need a second?
Second.
Okay, you got a first and a second. Any objections to the motion that was made, for questions?
None back.
Okay, Martha, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with seven yays.
Darcy, I want to say thank you for reifying, and thank you for being patient with us, of being some of these scared of.
I understand. I think it was a learning process for all of us.
Correct, it was. It was.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Darcy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darcy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on down to new business, approval of payroll. Councilman Sanger.
I move to approve the April twelfth, twenty twenty, through April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty payroll register for two hundred and four thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and four cents.
Okay, can we get a second?
Okay.
Councilman, first second set. Do we have any questions or objections to that motion?
None back.
Okay, Martha, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with seven yays.
Okay, thank you. Now, we'll go on down to accounts payable, if you'd motion.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Sanger.
I move to approve the accounts payable register for the period of April seventeen, two thousand twenty, April thirtieth, two thousand twenty, in the amount of two hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, can we get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have Councilman Sanger, second then. Do we have any questions or objections to the motion?
None back.
Martha, will you open online votes, please?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with seven yays.
Now, let's move on down to item C, a special use permit, twenty dash oh one dash oh one educational preschool permit. Can we get a motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
Councilman Sanger needs a motion.
I move, I move to approve special use permit twenty oh one oh one for an educational preschool located at three nineteen Fourth Street and three sixteen West Pine Street, more specifically described as lot three and north one oh two feet of lot four, block four. Um, U.P. first edition Rawlins, Car- Carvin County, Wyoming.
I'll second. Okay, Councilman Martinez, second set.
Mr. Mayor, we have a representative of a few questions for him.
Okay, yeah, if she'd come up and maybe fill us in on what's going on, or.
You're good. I could barely hear. I wasn't sure. I just wanted to let you guys know that the planning commission did review this. Um, we did send out letters to the people who she, the applicant, could not get signatures from. Um, we did not have any negative comments. I did want to share that, uh, fire department, um, actually submitted a comment in favor of this due to the better location than where they're at now and being located closer to emergency services. Um, I didn't get an official response from DDA, but they also shared their, um, comments, I guess, being in favor of this application. Um, Cheryl Hume is here, if you guys have questions for her, or if you have anything for me, let me know.
Okay.
Ms. Mayor, do you have?
Go ahead, Councilman Durst.
Hi, Cheryl.
Hello.
So, so are you moving the whole operation? Is that what, what, what this is? I mean, you're move, 'cause, 'cause you're out, aren't you out, under the airport, kind of, right?
Yes.
So, is that whole thing coming?
No, not the building.
I meant, I meant the whole operation.
Yes, yes. Um, so, what we will be doing is, all six of my staff, including the new licensed, um, state certified preschool teacher, would be moving on to three nineteen, what was it, three nineteen, three fourteen, Fourth Street, whatever that is. Um, yeah, uh, so, I will be purchasing that facility if this vote passes tonight. I will be purchasing that facility for Mr. De León. Uh, so, as we go through all the contracts and everything, get all that signed, then we're filing for a, uh, right to start the construction. We have to eliminate a lot of things in that building, because it's extremely old and outdated, to update it to licensing standards. We have had the state fire marshal, the state licenser from, uh, DFS for our whole childcare centers there. We've had, um, oh my gosh, the city fire. We've had, um, then who else? I mean, everybody has been there, like, before, when we started talking about this, we wanted to make sure this was a good location, a good fit for the community. Um, that's kind of where we're at. Uh, I have, I'm currently overloaded, and I have a huge waitlist for my facility. So, this will be a benefit to the community at large, just because we have such a large waitlist. Um, as everybody knows, infant care is really hard to find. That would open us up to a very large infant center, as well as our preschool. Um, and having that in the downtown area, I think it's just gonna be more beneficial to everybody.
See, it's gotta be better than being up there. I mean, that was.
Well, it's very dangerous after the crash of Kobe Bryant. That's where I really started getting nervous and watching the airplanes come across, and I was like, ah, we gotta do something different. So, that was a real nerve-wracking thing for us, but just being too small of a building. We currently are licensed for forty-two, in standing with the state, and this would give us probably seventy to a hundred. So, I'm hoping just for seventy. Because then I could just employ like ten to fifteen people. So, right now, I got six.
What's a good thing?
Which, which building is it?
It's the Old Eagles building. Um, so, yes, we own the Old Eagles and the Green building as well.
Okay.
So, we have two buildings on one lot, which are there, and then the new little building that just, that's all. It's somebody else's.
Any more questions?
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Martha, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with seven yays.
Okay, thank you, Martha. Now, move on down to a resolution, amending City of Rawlins fee schedule of appendix C. Motion?
Right.
Councilman Durst.
I move to approve the resolution amending City of Rawlins fee schedule appendix C building permits to include temporary RV parking permits as presented.
Can you get a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Royal, second set. Do we have any questions, can I go to that?
This is just, this is just adding it in, and we're gonna allow people to, to get the stickers, right?
And we have prices for, the cost.
That was a new addition to the Title Nineteen ordinance that was recently adopted. Um, and you don't know if you remember, it was at the very beginning, we went through a lot. Um, I think it's nineteen oh four, one, I think it's actually in here, so I'm not telling you the wrong code.
Oh, nine oh.
Oh, nine oh, yes. So, that, it's just gonna be a fee, because they're gonna need to do the site plan and meet the setbacks. Um, and we did break it out, so that they have the first time they do it, the second and third, um, and we increased it a little each time, because each time they are new, it's gonna be more work on staffs and to track everything and make sure that they're meeting their requirements.
And how long a day, each permit is for?
Thirty days.
Thirty days?
Yes.
Do you not see that?
So, that is in the actual ordinance. So, it says, um, let me see here, permitted in for no more than thirty days, only when permits and site plans have been obtained by Community Development Department. And then it says no more than two thirty-day extensions, per calendar year.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Devari.
My, I guess my question would be, I understand the churches and stuff, 'cause we had, we had law enforcement park on their properties, uh, sometime back. But I guess my question is, in this, uh, resolution, it talks about, uh, residential, what does that mean?
Well, this is a permit that we had talked about in one of the past, uh, council meetings to approve, to put this up, to allow somebody to, that they have adequate space on their property, to apply for one of these RV parking permits.
And Danielle has a whole list of the requirements and setbacks on that.
I'm not having a problem with it, except that I didn't understand, uh, the portion where it says residential. Why would somebody in a residential person wanna get a permit, uh, off street parking or an RV?
Well, that's where, if they had a large enough area behind their house or next to their house, and they had somebody come stay with them, they could actually stay in that camper on the resident's property for a length of time with this permit.
Yeah, so if my in-laws were to come visit.
This is just a question. Wouldn't the, uh, the, uh, motels and stuff, wouldn't they have a problem with that? I mean, they're taking money from their pockets.
No, 'cause they already have the RV, Devari. They're not gonna stay in a hotel anyway. We're not, we're not taking it away from anything. We're just allowing them. So, those people who come here for just a couple of weeks, or, or maybe, you know, five or six weeks, then, then I've got a extra property, and my, my uncle can park his RV on my property, and we're gonna allow it. But there's often, we have setbacks, and it's not, you can't just put it on there 'cause you want to. We have setbacks, and there is limitations.
And, and Devari, is that?
I kinda like the idea. I kinda like the idea. I guess I was just questioning, uh, if we got in and respond from the, from the hotels and motels here in town, because you are taking money from their pocket if they're not renting a room.
That's possibly true.
But that's just, that's just a question. I don't have any problem with it. I'll probably answer you just myself.
This is just the fee schedule.
Okay.
Okay.
Devari, this, this has already been approved. This is just adding the fee schedule. We already had approved this. Yeah.
All right, thank you, Devari. Any more questions for anybody?
Uh, none back.
Okay, Martha, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with seven yays.
Thank you, Martha. Now, move on down to the bid award for the twenty twenty phase two closure seating of the Rawlins landfill. Because, Councilwoman Smith.
I move to award the two thousand twenty phase two closure seating for the Rawlins landfill to Rocky Mountain Reclamation in the amount of ninety-six thousand, seven hundred, thirty-two dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
Council, Councilman Espinoza, second. Danielle, do you want me to explain to us what's going on?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and City Council, um, we put this out to bid. This is part of, the seating was done with the phase two work, and it did not take. Um, there was kind of a lot of backstory there. We tried to work with the initial bidder, and it got past the warranty, and there was some language in the contract. Um, but what we're having going on right now is that phase two area that was closed, and you can see it if you go out to the landfill and you were to drive to the metal pile or tires, there's a lot of erosion going on. Um, and then what's happening is that liner below is getting, um, exposed, which could cause damage, and that liner is super expensive. So, what we need to happen is to get that area reseated, um, to help with the erosion, to meet the EQ requirements, and to, and to meet our requirements that we gave to the EQ when we agreed to do the closure. Um, we did have one bid, and that's who I'm recommending that we award it to. Um, I did want to remind you guys, too, that, uh, Justin had sent an email, but this is not in the budget. However, there's no budget amendment. We had asked you guys to, for a hundred thousand dollars, to do wear course on the landfill road. This project is more important to us, um, plus we have some other pending things with the road to take care of. It would come from the same fund, and that's how we would pay for the reseating of this project. Um, if you have questions, I will try to answer them.
So, with this current company, Danielle, do they have some type of a, a warranty, or a stand behind their car?
Yes, so it's gonna come with a one-year warranty. Um, this company also provided a lot of references, which Craig Copas, our engineer, with EA checked up on. Um, they are also going to be hauling a manure source from Colorado that's really good, and should help that seat take as well. Um, if this is awarded tonight, my hope is that we can get on this pretty quickly and get that seat going, so that it takes, um, this summer, and we can see how it looks, and then have that warranty period.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Durst.
We, we used this company for some work out at the airport, and they were phenomenal. They were, they came out, did a great job. We planted a bunch of trees, pretty sure that we didn't water them, and they all died, and they came and took care of them, replaced them. A little bit of a cost, but a very fair, or what was probably our fault, so.
Yeah, they do.
I, I, they were great to work with, phenomenal.
Okay. Any objections for Danielle?
No.
Martha, will you open on, online voting, please?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with seven yays.
Okay, now, we'll move on down to the RFP award, the wastewater treatment lagoon, irrigation system, and replacement. Can we get a motion?
Yeah.
Councilman Sanger.
I move to award the request for proposals, um, to Environmental Dynamics International.
Councilwoman Smith, second set. Danielle, I know you've got some people here to speak, and fill it in a little bit.
Okay, so, on my iPad, I have Tom and Carl. Uh, Tom is with Air Diffusion. He was one of the bidders. And then I have Carl, who is our engineer. Um, I also. Um, I also asked Danny to come because I'm not the best at the technical side of this. Um, staff is recommending that we award the proposal to EDI. Um, as I said, Tom is on the phone and would like to speak to you guys a little bit about their product and their bid. And then myself, Danny or Carl are here to answer any questions.
Okay. Go ahead.
Can you hear us, Tom?
Can, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, sure can.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Danielle, and I'd also like to thank Ms. Wells, Ms. Smith, Mr. Nichols, Sam, Mr. Sanger, Ms. Estpanosa, Mr. Martinez, Mr. Durst, Carl and Danny for the opportunity to present the ADS solution for the Rollins wastewater treatment lagoons. As Danielle said on Tom Heid, I'm CEO of Air Diffusion Systems. And for three generations, we've specialized in developing and promoting natural and sustainable water and wastewater treatment technologies for the love of water. And it's the reason I get up and, uh, so excited to go to work every morning, knowing that I have the opportunity to purify water naturally and make small but meaningful, meaningful difference. And my grandfather Nelson grew up on the Mississippi River and became fascinated by the river's ability to treat pollution naturally. And wastewater treatment is completed by separating the solid water by adding oxygenation and mixing to allow for beneficial bacteria to consume waste as food. And like given enough time, these microbes are able to naturally and efficiently treat the wastewater and make it look like drinking water after it passes through the treatment system. So, um, while fishing on Mississippi one day, my grandfather realized that efficient and effective wastewater, uh, treatment, was simpler than duplicating Mother Nature's treatment systems of rolling river. And following World War Two, Nelson engineered the first subsurface fine bubble diffuser in the basement in Highland Park, Illinois in nineteen fifty-eight. And our original aeration was garden hose that had small holes drilled into it that worked well until they shut the blowers down for maintenance after six months of operation. And after the blower maintenance was completed, the system wouldn't start back up because the holes in the hose got clogged with sludge and sediment. And so Nelson went back to the drawing board and came up with a diffuser that uses smaller slits instead of holes that prevented clogging of the aeration on the inside. My father John took Nelson's linear aeration tube, upgraded the material to add U V resistance and made them last a minimum of twenty years of rain. There's still several facilities using the same linear aeration tube being purchased from the nineteen sixties, nineteen seventies and existent today, which is a true testimonial through, through that design. And so, John also invented our disc module diffuser where a hundred feet of Nelson's linear aeration is wrapped inside of four foot diameter stainless steel frame with one bullet hole that can keep them suspended off the bottom of sludge and sediment. These disc modules were weighed only forty-four pounds and are installed evenly throughout the basins with the most amount of diffusers installed in the primary basin where oxygenation and mix rate are greatest. So, each disc module attaches to a floating header with three-quarter inch feeder tubing and the header is secured back at shore with stainless steel wire rope and concrete anchors. The ADS fine bubble aeration disc module is independently certified to ASEAE, American Society Civil Engineering Standards, to deliver the highest oxygenation and mix rates below the input of electricity. The deeper a lagoon is, the more efficient the ADS system becomes. And all bubbles are not created equal and all diffusers that create bubbles are not created equal. The same, the same can be said for refrigerators, cars, TVs, computers, et cetera. Some are engineered with higher quality components and stated are designed to withstand the test of time. Our competitors know that they are less expensive and the reason they are less expensive is because they are not delivering the same level of quality and engineering compared with ADS. And working with Carl and Danny, I would ask to provide a narration system design for Rollins that accounted for current shortcomings, was energy efficient and included the easy way to expand the system in the future should the need arise. I personally put over a hundred hours into this design and a sixty-nine page proposal that was submitted. This is the finest design proposal I've ever picked, uh, and it was the only design that was submitted that met the criteria outlined in the quest for proposals. The ADS system proposal is the most expensive of the three technologies that provided proposals. And the ageable adage that you pay for what you get and why definitely rings true here. The ultimate cost for the ADS system may be slightly more expensive to begin with, but offers the longest lifespan and the lowest cost ownership over time. As we just discussed, Carl and Danny are leaning toward the EDI nine hundred plus diffuser design over the ADS hundred thirty-four disc module diffusers. And it's a, it is a preferred technology at this point in time. But buying a narration system is kinda like a marriage where divorce is now the option. Before committing to any of the technologies proposed and spending hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars, I would ask the following of the council. One, go visit with Danny and Carl and operators at the Rollins Lagoons to understand exactly how the system operates today. Two, take a minute to review through the three proposals that were submitted to understand the differences. And three, go to the local install to literally see what it is that you're committing to. The lander facility that we installed two years ago is less than two hours from Rollins. We have an open invitation to visit the facility at any time. You can even fly up from Chicago to give a guided tour. And regardless of which company or technology the city collects, I wanna thank Danny and Carl and everyone in the city for the opportunity to present the ADS solution for Rollins Lagoons. Should the ADS system be chosen, we are committed to providing excellent treatment and service for decades. Um, at this point, I would turn it back over to the council and say if there's any questions, I could ask you to address them. Again, thank you so much for the opportunity tonight. Thank you, Carl. Thank you, Danny. Really appreciate you both.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I'll make it a presentation.
Have a couple?
Absolutely. My pleasure.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Smith.
Uh, yes, thank you both for being here tonight. Um, I just have a question about how long will these, how many are going to be put in, number one, number two, how long do they last generally? And I know you need them, I mean, there's no question about that.
We do need them. Um, if you look, I have a spreadsheet that Carl put together.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, with the EDI system, um, it will be ten discs arrayed, there'll be ten laterals in the first pond. And then as you get to the, uh, there's pond one, two and three of the aeration system. There's going to be more laterals in the first and then as you go to the second, it's going to clean up and go to the second. Not really clean up, but add more air and then less air and less air before it goes into the, uh, settled water ponds. So, it's gonna be less, uh, materials than the, uh, than the ADS.
And part of this too is, this project, part of it is the design portion of it. So, what, um, right now our system is really old, it's not functioning properly, we're having some pH issues. So, with the new system, like he said, we'll have more in our first pond and it'll reduce, but we'll have to kind of identify that, uh, a little bit as we get into this. So, I don't know that we know exactly what pond three will have, cause it's gonna depend how well pond one functions. Um, and then the other part of this too is that we can reduce our blower power with what we have now.
Another silly question. Um, do you have to manually go out and do anything to the aerators on occasion, Danny?
Well, um, after talking with Carl, we did some research about it and with the EDI system, we've talked to people who have installed the EDI systems in their facilities and it's, uh, Carl was telling me that it's been eleven years since they've had to do really any ma- real maintenance to, to the, uh, system that, that we want to put into our system, the E, from the EDI system.
Thank you.
Do we have a, do you have like an idea of the lifespan of this?
Oh, at least more than twenty years.
Is that twenty years with every system we're looking at here?
Both systems are really good and I, I, I want to, uh, commend the Hines for, for everything they did for us and both systems are really good. Um, there's just a couple of things that I was looking through that, uh, caught my eye, uh, why it would be more beneficial to go with EDI. Um, I don't know if you want me to share those with you?
Could you challenge?
Okay, the first thing that caught my eye was the, uh, adding, um, enzymes to our system. Uh, with the ADS system, that's the only one that we would be adding enzymes. We tried adding enzymes before this whole project started and they didn't do anything, they didn't do anything for our system. So, we spent a lot of money to put the enzymes in and they didn't make a difference in the system. Um, with the, with the ADS?
Danny, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, can I interrupt real quick? I just wanna point out that the enzymes versus, um, what ADS proposed, or ADS did not propose enzymes. We proposed actual, uh, cultures, six strands of bacillus bacteria, which are different than enzymes. And it was an added value aspect in the ADS system does not need any sort of bacteria or enzymes. It's just we did the same thing at Rollins and we do the same thing in a lot of older lagoons. What you end up having is this older sludge layer and the older sludge is great for bacteria, but it's kinda missing some trace nutrients and the right types of bacteria. And so, our initial proposal just included a six month supply of this bacteria to help jumpstart that sludge digestion process. So, I, I, my apologies that it was not clear in the proposal, but the, the added twelve thousand dollars for the initial six months of, of bacteria is something that we found that you really advantaged on a cost benefit standpoint. So, I did wanna, you know, uh, at least make sure that that was, you know, part of this discussion. The ADS system or the EDI system does not need the, the beneficial bacteria, but then there are a lot of snake oil out there with these enzymes for sure. And it's something that we've, um, spent a lot of time figuring out which companies to work with and which ones not to.
Another thing that, uh, going along with the biotics is the thirty thousand dollars a year that we would have to, to either buy the biotics or, uh, maintenance for having people from, um, ADS come in and, uh, and use what they use to, to, uh, clean out the system. And that's, Carl kind of here on the spreadsheet is a thirty thousand dollar, uh, thing that we would have to spend every year for maintenance on the, you know, ADS equipment.
Right. Like, again, I would, I, I thought we talked about this too, but ADS does not require thirty thousand dollars a year for, uh, maintenance. And we were, as we discussed, uh, willing to give first five years, no charge to come to the system with our own labor and with our own guys who, who advanced company equipment, uh, to maintain the system and make sure that we had a presence to, to come and check it out. So, I don't know, again, this is where, I, you know, I sent Carl and I sent Danny like a, a letter and a tabulation uh, response to, to some of these points because it kinda had some differences in the actual numbers of what you would probably see with an ADS system. And it was kind of inflated, so I did have to put that together. I sent it to Carl and Danny and I'm not sure if it got read in time for the night's meeting, but it kinda goes through and talks about some of these, the, the bid tabulation and maybe some of the differences. If I could jump in here real quick, sorry, I, I don't know if you guys, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
I actually had the yearly maintenance for the ADS system and the triple point system, it's just seven thousand dollars a year. And then it, uh, requires a boat and, uh, individually lifting out the aerators and, and hose them off. So, the actual yearly maintenance is only seven thousand. And then I have an updated spreadsheet out there that didn't make it to the council pocket, Tom. Uh, yeah, please forgive me for that, but it does take off thirty thousand a year in the, uh, the biotics.
And Tom and Carl, uh, sorry to interrupt, but when you guys do, uh, start speaking, will you just identify yourselves for everybody here?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, I guess, I guess jumping in here real quick is, I guess I'm a little confused on what the, the total cost is gonna be because I've heard some different numbers, different than what we've got here that we're approving for, so. I guess, I'm not comfortable with this without knowing what we're really talking about.
So, that seems to be the million dollar question. Um, and this is something that hopefully Carl can back me up here because that's the question I've been asking of Dustin and I think even Danny and Carl. Uh, it's really hard to know the exact cost. Um, Carl feels that if we budget the three hundred and fifty thousand this year, we could get all of the aeration in the ponds and then, um, the blowers that we have currently would be sufficient to support that. And we could actually even turn one blower off, correct? Um, and then what we would like to do is next year, within the next couple of years, replace those blowers to update those, um, and that would be.
It would be even more cost because, um, it would be two seventy-five horsepower motor blowers that we would, we would get later. And we would only have to run one of those at a time. Right now, we're running two hundred horsepower motors to get, uh, the little aeration that we're getting in the ponds now. So, we would cut that more than in.
Right, our cost savings that we would see in the blowers would actually pay for the new blowers because if there's such a savings there.
So, what do you think that would, what a long-term impact would be for putting, putting in this back to the system?
Well, and that's kind of hard too. The thing is, we have to do something. Right now, we are out of compliance with DEQ. Um, we have submitted letters to them and I believe we're going to have to do so again this year um, because of our pH levels and because our aeration system is so old and outdated. So, um, I guess the immediate cost or benefit, it's not so much a cost, is that we become in compliance with the DEQ requirements.
Okay. This is, this is Tom Heid again. Um, you know, we did the lander system for less than six hundred thousand dollars, including installation and it's a shallower lagoon and about the same population. I know that we could come in for less than six hundred thousand dollars and provide a, a world-class system. Right, the water coming out of the lander system right now is drinking water, it falls even if we put it in a bottle. So, there, you know, the land and blowers that you currently have are outdated. We talked, Carl, Danny and I, uh, on updating those and there's a bunch of different blowers that we use. Some are more efficient than others. The initial ADS proposal, you literally see most Cadillac premier blowers that are available. And for about a hundred thousand dollars less, we can have really nice blowers with five-year warranty and five-year, uh, you know, twenty, thirty-year life expectancy, but five-year complete warranty, including the ADS system written warranty for first five years of product and treatment.
Okay. So, another question. Um, so is this system that much more superior than the other two that were quoted that are cheaper?
I, I don't know.
Is that a question you can ask for Carl?
So, I believe Carl, did you go to the lander, uh, facility, Carl?
Yes, this is, uh, Carl, Honorable Mayor and Council. Uh, I've spent probably well over a hundred hours reviewing these systems and giving back to the original question on, on cost. When we first went out, we had to have kind of a point of departure steam. And so, we put out an RFP looking for a design build proposals. And then what we're really doing is is picking a company to work with and I think Tom Heid mentioned this is, we're gonna be married to this company for a while. And the fine bubble aeration is the superior system and the more efficient system for addressing the issues we're seeing in the ponds right now, which is the pretty extreme etymology of the storage ponds, which are below the treatment ponds. And that's kind of a gathering problem we're hoping to address by, by improving the aeration of the system. I've been to the lander system, I've, I've physically held the, uh, the ADS, uh, uh, aerators in my hands. I have many pictures and speaking of the water quality that Tom Heid mentioned, they have, uh, where they discharge to the river from the pond, over water, used to be kind of milky white going out of the, the, uh, the, uh, the river. And now it's beautifully clear and it's full of trout. I can't wait to get over there and fish. But the, uh, when I looked at the, the different programs, I had to sort of look out into the future and, and pick what would be the easiest to maintain. At the end of the day, all of this stuff is, is basically like irrigation hoses, like, like each, black irrigation hoses like in your yard, laid in the pond. It is not a super durable, like welded iron product. We are gonna be doing ongoing maintenance to whatever system we put in. We will be changing out different components of it, you know. You know, we get five to seven years of, of warranty on the installed system as it shows up. But, you know, down the road, we're gonna be, like I said, we're gonna be married to this system for maybe twenty to thirty years. You know, we'll, we'll have an ongoing struggle. And I chose the EDI system because it had, because it had essentially the least amount of pipe in it. It has these laterals and then these saddle clamps that clamp the, uh, diffusers onto these large laterals. And there's almost no small hoes in it. And then the triple point system and the air diffusion system both rely on these lengths of small, uh, garden hose-sized hoes laying across the bottom of the lagoon and that's where I saw the biggest hassles coming from, dealing with the small hose. And that's where I saw the biggest hassles coming from, dealing with the small hose. So we'll eliminate the small hose and get the fine bubble diffusion systems. And also we have to accord to a budget, you asked about the budget number. And we can essentially put in to kind of what we, what we have to spend, you know? Like it's a, it's a design build process. And the original numbers were for whole systems with blowers. We can use our lamps and blowers, we can realize the cost savings for years. But we can essentially get the important elements in the pond. And that's what I'd like to do at, at this point, and I'd like to use the, the EDI equipment based on, like I said, a, a pretty extensive review. And just so you know my background, I'm a wastewater engineer with another business. I design over a hundred systems a year. And, uh, I put quite a bit of research, I looked at the EPA's research, I followed up. And I talked to operators of whole systems, three systems, triple point systems as well. And, and, uh, feel like I put a lot of research into it. I, I did sort of just kind of wing it. I've run my majors by Mr. Heine and his dad and jumped guard with EDI and triple point. And except for Mr. Heine, everyone says, no, you can, there, there was nothing on that spreadsheet that we can't prove about our equipment that you can't, that we can complain about or that we'd like to challenge you. So that's where we're at. And, uh, yeah, and I don't know if you have any more questions for me directly, feel free to throw them at me.
Councilman Smith, go ahead.
Um, looking at the bid openings, um, this is not the lowest base bid. So what I want to get right to the bottom is what is the amount that we are approving? Is it 363,964 tonight? Or do we take off the 27,000 out of that 30,000 and leave only seven for maintenance? Or what is the true bottom line that we're approving tonight?
If this is approved tonight, we would plan on not going over our $350,000 budget.
350, okay.
That's the number that's being approved tonight, if approved, would be 350,000.
Correct.
And these are complete, this is just a complete new system, basically, is that?
Correct, it would be a new aeration system, yes.
With the exception of.
This is Carl, speaking again. Aaron, this is just the components that are in the pond, Aaron. We're going to reuse the existing blowers. There are a lot more blower than we need and they're not very efficient blowers. But right now we're running 200 horsepower blowers 24/7. And once we have the fine bubble equipment installed in the pond, we'll be able to turn off one of those blowers entirely and possibly dial down the remaining blower. We have VFDs, uh, variable frequency drives on them. Uh, still create a lot of cost savings at the end of the day, but we may be able to dial down those blowers. So that, that, that remaining blower. So at the end of the day, we'll have new equipment in the pond. We'll have the old blowers and we'll reuse some of the existing headers, headers that are there, the steel headers. And we will be using the, uh, the existing lamps blower, but just one of them. So again, remediate cost savings, probably 40% right off the top. And just so you know, we spent, spent about $6,000 a month electricity at the wastewater treatment plant. So those, those, uh, turn it off one blower would probably save us close to, and I have that on the spreadsheet. And sorry, scroll, oh, it'll save us about, uh, $3,750 per month savings.
Wow, cool. Forty-five thousand.
That's, that's correct. And most importantly, we'll, we'll be able to save our, our downstream storage lagoons, uh, from this ongoing etymology, which is just a fancy word for we're introducing nutrients to the storage lagoons. We're getting algal blooms. And then we're getting decomposition of the algae and, and, and kind of not very complicated process. Uh, that's why the pH is going up and that's what we're failing right now. But we're also getting pretty high, uh, total suspected solid numbers. And it's all not a result of the sewage itself, but the growth of the, uh, the algae in those pond ponds. And the more we put it off, the more difficult it will be to address it. And in fact, I, I think when we first turn on the aeration systems, we're going to have quite a bit of stirring going on, the ponds, and we're going to see actually some spikes in our TSS numbers and stuff like that. And then hopefully we can address when the time comes, but it'll all figure out eventually.
Okay, well it appears just off the, the electricity savings, that we've had an eight-year payback on this initial investment just off the electricity savings.
That's correct.
Any other questions for the council? Okay, um, Marla, would you open online voting please? Oh, hold on one minute.
Can we, uh, I would ask that the council amend their motion to specify up to a maximum amount in this particular instance?
And I still amend that motion.
Okay. Can you second that?
Councilmember saying, made the first motion.
Oh, did I?
Councilmember.
Okay, sorry.
Smith seconded it.
Does it, I'll check it out.
I'll make that motion. So you can go ahead and second that.
Thank you, this will come.
The motion is made to amend the original motion that now exceeds the $350,000.
Thank you.
Right. And that's what we're voting on here tomorrow?
Uh huh.
Are you changing what we're reading?
Yep.
Do we have to refresh to see the new one?
Yep.
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with seven yays.
Thank you, Marla.
Thank you, Carl and Tom.
Carl?
Thank you for seconding that and thank you, Tom, for coming today. Yeah, thank you guys, thank you Carl, thank you Danny, thank you council.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you guys too. I know that's kind of complicated stuff and I have learned a lot, so I appreciate you bearing with us through all of that. And, um, just kind of a side note, I think that we're really wanting to get you guys out to the wastewater plant for a tour, which I think is later this summer and I can see Steve is super excited about it. Um, but it is kind of a unique system and I think if you guys see it, it'll be easier to understand some of it. Um, and Danny's an awesome tour guide. You guys get to do a lot of the water treatment next council meeting at that work session and then the sewer plant later, so.
I've been asking for a year for a tour. Bring it on, I said, I've been asking for a year for a tour.
Yeah, it's actually, I mean, it's a little gross, but it's a really interesting system.
It's an awesome system. It's going to get better, the smell will be gone after a couple of years.
Thank you for all the hard work you've done.
Thank you guys.
Thanks.
Now we'll move on down to item six. Uh, rejection of an RFP Depot Park Splash Pad Design Bill. Do you get a motion? Councilman Smith?
I move to reject all proposals for the Depot Park Splash Pad Design Bill.
Will you second?
Second.
Councilman, that's another second.
What was yours?
Yeah.
Would you like to explain to us, uh?
What's going on?
What's going on?
Honorable Mayor and Council, uh, thank you for this time tonight. Um, it's pretty self-explanatory in your documentation that it's pretty clear cut. We did receive one bid and it was over the budgeted amount. So at this time, we are going to reject this bid. And then Carl Smith and Leo and City Manager and I are all working on a plan, um, to get this project done and just kind of put some components together so we.
Where do we go now?
So we can move forward, yeah.
Okay, that works. Any questions? Are there objections to the motion of the day?
In the back.
Okay, Marla, would you open online voting please?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with seven yays.
All right, thank you, Marla. I'll move on down to item H to approve an MOU for the Carbon County School District One for the Rawlins High School 2020 graduation banners. Get motion on that? Councilman, who else?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with Carbon County School District One for the installation of the banner arms on the downtown black decorative light poles for Rawlins High School 2020 graduation banners.
Okay.
Okay, with first and a second. Do you have somebody who would want to explain this?
Honorable Mayor and Council, um, so you should have the memorandum in front of you now. Um, I just want to preface that it was a pure teamwork effort on this, on getting this done. We had, I've been approached by the school district to do something like this for our 2020 graduates. Um, I had talked to, asking, in, in our city manager about two weeks ago that this might be coming down the pipe. And then we weren't sure if we could get the arms and we didn't sure if we could get the banners. Um, but as of last Wednesday afternoon, we knew all the pieces could come together. So I emailed, um, the city attorney, Amy Bog on Thursday morning, just Thursday morning, like five days ago. And she diligently put her effort for this, Dustin put that forward, we all got it done. As it says in the documentation, that as this was being released, she was still diligently working. Um, I did hear from Superintendent Hamel, um, this afternoon and the district's, uh, attorney did give him approval that it was a good documentation, a couple of minor changes like signature lines. Um, Amy did make those changes. And then also Superintendent Hamel does have the approval from the scoreboard to sign the MOU in the morning and we can get this, um, the facilities up and going tomorrow to get those arms hung. I think it's a really great collaboration between the school district and the city. And in the end, we will actually, um, own the banner arms, the metal banner arms to have. And so it's a win-win.
And you can do whatever down the road too.
We'll, we can use them for everything. We can use them, Patty Hayes was talking about the, using them for the Latino Heritage Festival. The school district is talking that I'm sure Class of 2021 is going to want banners. You know, so it's, we just ended up being, um, Fritz Welding came in and did the banner arms per the spec. Um, it's just been such a great collaborative effort on one everybody's part, including the team, um, Amy Bog and Dustin. So it's just exciting to be part of this. The parade is going to be, um, on after the graduation, major social distancing. We put a, a parent at every light post, which is about 15 feet. We've got plenty of social distancing. The kids will have, leave the high school, um, and drive in their vehicles after graduation on Sunday night. Students only in the parade, the parents will be at the light pole, social distancing. It's just, I think it's going to be a good opportunity to get for these kids. And again, being able to have these banners up, but then also having the banner arms for this. And, um, all this was actually, I also want to give a shout out to Sinclair Wyoming Finding Company because the school district did write a grant that is paying for the banner arms. And, um, the banners, which again, just such a great collaborative effort of all of us coming together.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, Pam, how long will the banners be up?
Well, I'm working with, you know, they're at, the banners will actually be owned by the school district to give to the students. So that's just something, uh, high school will make that decision.
Okay.
So, I mean, I'd love to say let's keep them up for a month or so, but that's, may not be. It's, it's their choice because it's, technically it's the school district's banners, probably given to the students.
And will this help with our art, art and downtown project?
So yes, because we're going to have to purchase those banner arms come this fall or for Passion and Price. So yes, it's a fabulous precursor to what's to come.
Thank you.
Yes, I love that.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one more question. Uh, so on the banner arms, are, are they going to be like a removable bracket or are they just going to mount on there so that there's just always a bracket and you would just?
So there is actually, all of what, well, I, well, I knew this, but I've learned a lot more in the last four weeks about all of our light poles in downtown and exactly that we have two different light poles and how they work. But to answer your question, um, Councilman, is there is a bracket that is actually made in the light pole that screws right in.
Oh, neat, okay.
It's not the kind where you can move them up and down.
It's just brackets onto a pre-existing basis.
Our, our two, um, manufacturers of our light poles actually have the bracket already made, manufactured in the light pole.
Beautiful.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Good job.
Any more questions or objections to the motion of the day?
In the back.
Marla, would you open online voting please?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with seven yays.
Thank you, Marla.
4:00 PM, Wednesday the 13th, the week from tomorrow. You can come down and take a portion of a street with an eight-foot ladder and your scalp and a pen designed because for release volunteering to hang banners, the more the better, to get these done very quickly. We have 102 banners with the co-op, so this is for the high school, I, I'm sorry, that motion did say it is for Rawlins Cooperative High School and for Rawlins High School. So we have 102 banners of graduating seniors.
We have 102 light poles?
We have 117.
Fantastic.
Well, if they get any bigger.
And we, you should.
Do you need more lights?
And you, and you should see this route that Chief Palmer and I came up with how the parade is going to be. We only have to walk around two little areas, right? So for, for that Sunday night.
Don't forget to thank you teachers to one.
4:00 PM on the 13th, meet at Depot Park. Social distancing will have different sections of the streets all laid out to hang and go. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on down to item I.
Thank you.
I approve a, approve amendment one to grant agreement for Wyoming Wildlife and Natural Resource Trust Wyoming Pond 0317 dash 007.
Mayor.
Councilman Smith?
I move to ratify and approve amendment one to the grant of me, agreement between Wyoming Wildlife and Natural Resource Trust and the City of Rawlins for Rawlins Pond 317 007 project.
Okay, will you second?
Second.
Councilman, that's another seconds. Dustin?
Uh, back in August of 2017, I believe, um, this grant was originally written, recorded um, for the Tim Cantor project, that's that $180,000 we talked about. That was grant money to help offset some of the cost. You remember?
Yep.
A few months ago, when we discussed that, this is basically an extension of it to July 1 of 2023 to get that done.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so all the terms stay, it's just basically saying like, we know we can, we can just go a little longer.
Any other questions for Dustin?
In the back.
There's no objections or questions, we'll open online voting.
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with seven yays.
Now we'll move on down to J, a resolution, Wyoming region three multi-hazard mitigation plan. Do you get motion?
Have a question first.
Okay.
Um, we haven't had an opportunity to read this mitigation plan. Um, I don't want to approve something that I don't even know what it is, I haven't read it.
A second there.
Okay, so would we, somebody like to make a motion to table this?
Well, we have, we should have to put on the table though, right?
Hold on. Let's do Friday.
Okay, Mayor.
Councilman Smith?
This is a 400-page document that we're basically, if we say yes to a resolution, that we're adopting without seeing, correct? But is it not the document that is put together by, um, oh, what John Zager was? Was it his department? So all of the agencies have come together, put in all their input. So our fire department has looked at it.
Yes.
And our police department has looked at it. How's our city manager at time even, okay? Um, Attorney Bog, no, okay. I guess I have enough faith in my fire department and my police department. Um, on is, from what I remember years ago when I dealt with some of this stuff, it goes into what you're going to do in different scenarios and how, who's going to respond? Who has preference in responding, that kind of thing?
Mr. Mayor. I, I've been at the part of this actually. I'm on the local emergency planning committee of Fort Worth, Troy. Um, this is something that we even brought in a huge consultant together. Um, they did Carbon and Albany at the same time. I'm comfortable, but I was.
Well, I think we have, that there's enough of our own resources that have been involved in it. If the council. If the council would wish to move forward, then I believe we can.
One other question, I guess, of the fire chief. Um, if there is a disaster, or hazardous materials, disaster, whatever under this, where, who takes the lead? Is it the sheriff's office that takes the lead, or that isn't the MOU on that, or? If there's something that happens, how?
Upon the discipline on what the hazard is, so, I mean, this is for the whole county, but also, I mean, the city's being a part of it, but it's for the whole county. So this could, something could happen in Bag, something could happen in Hannah, this is an all-hazard for everything in our county, is what this is.
Just a managed emergency.
Right, so whatever, whatever the hazard is, that's who's going to be in charge of that hazard.
Like COVID nineteen.
Like COVID nineteen, the public health is in charge of it. It's a spill on the railroad tracks in town, and the fire department would probably be in charge of that.
Hello, mayor and council, as well, I just want to inform you that, um, Carbon County clerk Gwen Bartlett also, um, included in her information that if it isn't approved, it could jeopardize FEMA funding in case there was a hazard.
And there currently is a hazard.
Right.
So do we know why, um, this is on the basis of us now?
Well, I did a little work, research, um, Ron Brown. So I'm not sure exactly his title, did he take John Zager's position?
He was the interim.
He was the interim, and he had sent it to the previous city manager who had been working on it, and he didn't follow through, and we didn't know to follow through, it fell through the cracks. So I got an email this week from Gwen Bartlett, might have been yesterday, that it had to be approved by Friday, and so I tracked it down. And, um, Mr. Brown did send me links this afternoon to that four hundred and some page document that is, the link is put on the board docs. I didn't think I had enough time to print out and scan a four hundred page, so.
So city attorney, Amy Bach, what would be your recommendation?
I would just make, uh, the record very clear that the council, the majority of the council, has not had the opportunity to review the document, that the public has not had a true opportunity to review the document, and legal counsel has not had a true opportunity to review the document. With that said, um, you have been apprised that, uh, potential federal funding, particularly during this pandemic, could be in jeopardy. I think the, um, it would be prudent of the council, if you wish to approve it, unread, unreviewed, uh, without any, uh, updates from you or recommendations, uh, that you're doing so, um, subject to a full review by all the parties that need to, including the public. We know that, that that's a huge step. Um, and so, uh, approval today, subject to final approval or objections from, from review.
Okay, so we need to put that in our original motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Cut all that, the big red.
What's she saying?
I'll have to go back and listen to it tomorrow.
Uh, well, I'll just make it easy for you, I made the motion correct, if I remember, I did, I don't know. Um, that we moved to amend the motion with the following language, that this is being approved, subject to the full council not having had review, had a city staff, with our attorney and our city manager having not been able to review it, and the public's not reviewing it.
Can you give us our second?
Well, there was a motion.
There was a motion.
There was a motion.
I, I had a question, the original question.
All that's left, any other questions?
Okay.
So we made the first motion, will we get a second?
A second.
Do you have a first and a second? Counselor first, is the second?
Okay.
Any other questions or objections to the motion was made?
I do have a question.
Okay, Counselor second.
If, if our, um, police department and our fire department had worked on this particular thing, and they knew that this was going to be coming, I, I would have thought that we would have heard about it.
I, I would have thought so, but I, I guess, I, as I understand it, had went to our half-city manager and had gone drop on that. Oh, assuming that the police department and fire department was probably under the impression that the previous city manager had already briefed us on it.
Okay.
Yeah, um, we didn't know the timeline of this, so we didn't know when it would be too, when we were working on this. We worked on this, what, eight months ago?
Yeah.
Eight, nine months ago? Um, and it was a, it was a very long process, a very lengthy process. But we didn't know the timeline and the deadlines that were involved, so. And we, I mean, you know, the police department, the health, all of these.
Right, because there was a different emergency manager at that time as well, when we first started this project.
We've had two personal changes in the man, in the emergency manager office. I have one question, mayor, two again. Is this amendable if we find something that we object to?
Amy?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
So you want to repeat your question?
Yes, is this amendable if we, we, if we read this and we find something that we have some issues with, we, is it amendable? I imagine that whole group would have to come back together and can, if what's concerned.
You have the authority, I, I would recommend that this council review those, um, the, uh, plan in its entirety. And if you have any corrective or recommended changes, that the council, um, represented by the mayor, write a letter to the, um, agency or, or board in charge identifying your concerns and requests for corrected changes or clarification. Uh, so I would say, by doing this, you're not, you're approving it conditionally upon that review, and then if you have something that just doesn't sit right with this council, you should have the opportunity to, uh, notify, uh, the project managers, project leaders of your concerns.
I have one more quick question, and I don't know who, I don't know who it goes to. Uh, I assume that every municipality in Carbon County has to approve this, right? So, I mean, so, I mean, I guess if you wanted it amended, everybody would, you know, it's kind of a, you're going to leave it, but I think it's going to be.
Well, I, not necessarily taking it leave, I think, you know, if we come up with an area or issue that we feel is questionable, we have the right to voice that.
I agree, I, I, I didn't mean otherwise, I agree. I guess I just meant that it would, but it would take all of Carbon County to approve that change.
Yes, correct.
Not just.
Right, I agree.
Any other questions or comments?
None in the back?
Marla, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with six yeas and council member Martinez nay.
Okay, now we will, uh, item ten, executive session, if I get a motion?
Make the motion.
Counselor second?
I move, oh, gosh, yeah, it's at the right. I move that we go into executive session. Per Wyoming statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five, due to consider the appointment, employment right to practice or dismissal of a public officer, professional person or employee, or to hear complaints or charges brought against an employee, professional person, or officer, unless the employee, professional person, or officer requests a public hearing. Governing body may exclude from any public or private hearing during the examination of a witness, any or all other witnesses in the matter being investigated. While in the hearing or executive session, the governing body may deliberate on its decision in executive session.
Can you get a second? Second. Okay, we have a first and a second. Any questions or objections to our motion of going into an executive session?
At eight forty.
I didn't see the only guy that has the time, but I just did, so.
Okay, Marla, would you open online voting, please?
Dari, need a second, right? He probably needs to vote. Waiting for Dari to vote.
Dari, did you vote?
No, I didn't, didn't come up.
So, can you give us a voice?
There you are. There you are. Thank you, Dari.
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with seven yeas.
All right.